First special meeting of July. Because of the Fourth of July holiday, we moved this meeting back a week. This time I'll call the court to order. I'd like to ask Neid Jackson if he would come up and say the invocation for us. While he's making his way up, if everyone would turn their phones on silent or turn them off, I would appreciate it.
I do heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you now, Lord, just thanking you so much for this, another day of life that you've given us. Lord, we thank you so much for the men and women that serve this county, dear Lord, that everything that will be said and done will be done in a way to be pleasing unto you, dear Lord. Or we just ask that you continue to bless the good people of Pike County, dear Lord, and that everything that's done here, dear Lord, will be done for the betterment of the citizens of Pike County.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. We do have Commissioner Adkins here virtually tonight. He is still on the mend, but we do have him here, and he can hear us. You can hear us okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, I can hear you good.
All right, thanks. All right, this time I would like to ask Fabian Little if he would come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of a scratchy throat, so everyone will bear with me. First item is the approval of the minutes of the June 22, 2023, meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion seen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is approval of the notice to proceed for H2O construction effective July 17, 2023, for the Wolf Pit Industrial Site wastewater system and fire suppression tank project. Sharon, would you come up and explain this, please?
This is the next step up at the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. We are almost complete with wastewater, except for the fire suppression tank, I mean, the water system. And so this is the beginning of the wastewater system. But anyway, that's it.
We're going to do this project, go ahead and give the permission to go ahead and start, but this may be delayed because of materials, is my understanding.
Yes, we're going to be many weeks out getting the materials. But under the advisement of the Economic Development Administration, they said you can go ahead and do a notice proceeding, just do a change, zero change order, because they're going to be two, three months getting some of this stuff.
I mean, there's still supply chain issues from the pandemic, but we're ready to go ahead and move this forward, because we really do need to get this industrial site ready as soon as possible, because, you know, I've said this, I'll continue to say it, you know, having an industrial site doesn't guarantee you're going to get a business located there. There's 100% certainty, if you don't have a site, you're not going to get anything there.
No.
So, you know, we've made a lot of progress on this in the last four and a half years. Hopefully, Sharon, what do you think the timeframe to get everything, all the rest of the infrastructure in? And just so the public knows, we've got a funding request in for money to construct a spec building.
Yes, uh-huh.
What's our timeframe looking at to finish the project as far as the infrastructure?
Well, the wastewater and water, of course, that'll be completed in the next six months, hopefully. If we didn't have this delay on the supply chain, it'd be done before Christmas, or way before Christmas. But now you're looking at, of course, I have requested money for broadband, natural gas, so I'd say the utilities could be completed by spring of 2023, I mean, '24. And then the spec building, that, you know, that's going to be another probably two years. To get everything, you're looking at least two to three years.
You know, unfortunately, government doesn't move fast.
No. Once you do the grant, get an award, you're still looking at another year or two. We've been up there 54 weeks right now, 54 weeks, just in the construction part.
Well, we're going to continue to move it forward as fast as we can. Is there a motion to approve the notice to proceed for H2O construction on the Wolf Pit Industrial Site wastewater system and fire suppression tank project?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion seen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the approval of the permit and merchandise sales agreement for hillbilly trails. Jerry, you want to come on up and explain this real quick?
All we have here, Judge, is a sales agreement for vendors to sell permits and/or merchandise. They have the choice to sell either or both. Most all of them do want to sell both. Once this agreement is voted on and approved, I can start scheduling appointments and visiting with these businesses and going over the process, the notebooks that I have put together that they'll use, all the forms to go over and review, and it...
Has, Roy, you've looked over the agreement, I assume, and...
Yes, Reggie, I sat down, and I'll tell you, what we wanted to do was just keep it at one page, and we had to do another some practice where the actions, it's numbered to the level that it says the date of closing, the second page. We wanted to keep this very simplistic, to make sure we covered all the major people that have been concerned about. You know, we had agreed as we looked at representatives, and these figures, we looked at, because they don't have, you know, we got everything social, and then...
Jerry, we've got representatives of the media here tonight. Just for purposes of an update, how long you think it's going to be before the initial segment of the trail system is ready to go?
We should have mapping completed by, hopefully, the end of next week. I've got to visit with these 14 merchants or retailers. I'd like to say on the inside, four weeks, the outside, six weeks, we should be selling permits and be open for business.
So have we also worked to try to get an app where we could get, you know, people that are on the trail could use an app on their phone to show them where they are and have a map laid out? And I know there's some apps out there that some trail riders and some members of the advisory committee use. Have we made any progress on that issue, or have we started looking at that issue?
We have. The way we're going to start with that is our Trail Operation Manager, Cliff Smallwood, tomorrow is going to get with Tim Fields over 911. He's bringing in some mapping that Tim can go ahead and get started with. And we've visited with Tim Fields before there, and he's going to start off with a link that can be used with Google Earth, where anyone can put it on their device, their phone or their tablet, to Google Earth and see where they're at on the trail and riding. And the app will come shortly after. They're a little expensive, but we'll have an app before long.
All right, very good. All right, any questions about this? Commissioner Adkins, you got anything?
No, no, I'm hearing, and I understand pretty good. I'm ready.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the permit and merchandise sales agreement for the hillbilly trails?
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adkins. Any question or discussion seen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is an item that I added to the agenda regarding the adoption of a resolution opposing the Kentucky power rate increase. Now, I want to go back several years. Rocky Adkins, who is an advisor to Governor Beshear, senior advisor to Governor Beshear and I, you know, took a pretty hard line stance when we were in the legislature over the closure of the Big Sandy Power Plant. And, you know, I'll be the first one to say that I have a lot of friends that work for Kentucky Power, that retire from Kentucky Power, and I can't speak volumes enough about the linemen, the men and women who go out when we have a power outage or a storm to get power back on. I mean, they're, just like our road crews, they're out in the worst weather, in the worst conditions, in a dangerous job, and they deserve a tremendous debt of gratitude from the people of this county and this region. On the other hand, I have serious reservations regarding the latest proposal for an 18.3% power bill hike. And if you've not heard about this, if you're listening to this for the first time, the July 7 to 9 edition of the Appalachia News Express has a story, it's on the front page. They are requesting a 13.6% overall revenue increase with an 18.3% increase in residential power bills. It quotes Dr. Gregory Green, who's an economist and professor of economics at the University of Pikeville, said a rate increase of that magnitude would have a large impact on individuals, particularly those on fixed income. The worse off people are, the worse off people are people on some sort of a fixed income, they're going to have to absorb the entire 18.3%. For individuals to absorb the 18.3% increase, Green said they will have to find a way to move money from another area in their budget into paying their electric bill. As a rough example, if someone's paying a $365 a month bill for their electric rate and they're earning minimum wage, 30.2% of their entire gross annual income is going to go to their electricity bill. Now, as a business owner and as a residential rate payer, I have seen time and time again our rates increase. And if you look at what I tried to do in the legislature, I introduced legislation at one time to elect the Public Service Commission, because right now you have people appointed by the governor, whichever party controls the governor's office, and then they're confirmed by the state senate. The problem with that is, is they essentially have been rubber stamps for rate increases every time a rate increase is asked for. The modus operandi is the power company will ask for 18.3% if they're really hoping to get 10%. But whether they get 18.3% or some lesser amount, we have thousands of people in this area, in this county, and throughout this region who simply can't absorb another power rate increase. The taxpayers of the county are going to be hit, not only on the residential bills, but the county's going to have to pick it up. The city's going to have to pick it up. Our school system's going to have to pick it up. Our library district, I mean, it goes on and on. And the state offices, the highway department, food stamp office, the state police, all those rates are going to continue to increase. It all is going to be paid by the ratepayers, the customers. And, you know, I've always said that there's nothing free. And unfortunately, we've had county officials in this county that tried to do everything free for people as a way to ingratiate themselves, but there's nothing free. Somebody is paying for every service that government provides. And as the judge executive and as members of the court, you know, we've worked hard to try to get the county's power rates down. We've worked hard to make sure we're saving money on our utilities here, this taxpayer money. I've done the same thing at my house. We've added insulation. We just changed out the caulking around our windows. We've got energy efficient light bulbs. But, you know, regardless of what we've done, the power bills keep going up, and those rates are going to have to be absorbed by people who simply can't absorb anymore. If you're on a fixed income and fuel prices are up, grocery prices have gone through the roof, eggs, bacon. I went to the grocery store for my wife the other night, bacon was over $9 a pack. And when you've got three kids, I can tell you, you go through bacon, you go through milk, you go through bread, you go through eggs. And, you know, I'm blessed to be in a position that I can still pay it, but it's hurting everybody. And it's hurting elderly people, people who are disabled, and people who can least afford it. And, you know, I went to, I was at the airport in Frankfurt a few years ago, and there were three business jets on the tarmac. And I asked one of the attendants, I said, "Who flew in here in three jets?" "Oh, that's Kentucky Power, they're down here for meetings." I mean, it's not that far from Columbus, Ohio, and to fly two or three jets to Frankfurt, you know, that's a little much. The way the power companies work, they have a monopoly. They were given, the power company, Kentucky Power, its predecessors were given a monopoly. You go in, you put electric service into a region, we'll give you a monopoly. You can recover your operating expenses, and we give you about a 10% profit. By law, they're guaranteed roughly a 10% profit. I think it's closer to, closer to 9.4 or something like that currently. But when I was in the legislature, we were able to get the bill out of the state senate and into the House where it died, to elect the Public Service Commission. I unsuccessfully tried on a couple of occasions to pass a bill that said that utilities could not recover more than 5% profit in an economically distressed or depressed area. For them to get 9 or 10% guaranteed return on their investment, when thousands of people in this region are struggling just to put food on the table, to pay their utility bills, when they don't even have money to invest. You know, most of the people that I represent, that this court represents, they don't have stock portfolios. They don't get investment income. And for the utility companies to get a 9 or 10% guaranteed profit, it's just not fair, given the economic certainties that we're facing here. You know, coal's up. A lot of people have seen the press releases about coal severance tax. Well, they're already telling us that coal severance tax is likely going to be substantially less next year. And I want to remind people, two, three years ago, coal mineral severance bottomed out at one point, coal and mineral together bottomed out at 1.1 million. And, you know, it's up right now, but most economists say it's going to be short-lived. The employment we're seeing from this upswing is probably going to be short-lived. We've lost a lot of population. And one of the reasons that our rates have gone up, one of the reasons the garbage rate went up, one of the reasons that water and sewer have gone up, is at one time there was 81,000 people in this county, you're down to 56,000. At one time, you had hundreds of coal mines operating around this county and throughout this region. Fair statement, William, when we had all these little truck mines running?
Very, very.
Now, you don't have but a small number of mines. Their commercial customers have declined, their residential customers have declined, and in order to pay for the generation and transmission costs, the rates keep going up. Well, the problem with that is the people who are still here, the businesses who are still here, are having to shoulder that. And, you know, I talked about what the customers, the individual residential customers are going to have to deal with, what your government entities are going to have to deal with, but every business, whether it's a restaurant, or it's Walmart, or Food City, or a mom and pop grocery store, Velocity Market, Quality Foods, it doesn't matter who it is, when those rates go up, what are they going to have to do? They're going to have to raise the price of their goods and services. It's a tire store, doesn't matter what it is, all of that gets passed on to the folks who live here. Even if you don't have an account with Kentucky Power yourself, if you rent or you live at home, if you're a college student that lives here, they're going to be shouldering that burden because of increased cost in goods and services in restaurants, stores, whatever. So I put an item on the agenda to have Colonel Downey draft a resolution to be passed by the fiscal court to send to the Kentucky Public Service Commission, setting forth the opposition of the Pike County Fiscal Court to any rate increase. And I think Colonel Downey, if the court approves this, we could even use some of the information that Dr. Green has stated in this article in the News Express to bolster the resolution. So it would be my motion that the fiscal court adopt a resolution to send to the Kentucky Public Service Commission opposing any power rate increase by Kentucky Power due to the economic circumstances here in the county and throughout the region. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a tie for a second here.
Judge, I'll tell you, I agree with everything you said there. I know elderly peoples, a lot of people on fixed income, I know them personally. They can't pay that power bill now. Can't do it. I know people, it's doing that power because of the increases with the power bills, and I just don't think they can stand it anymore. I mean, you know, you can understand so much on $900 a month. And, you know, when your power bill runs $300 or $400, I mean, you know, it's just impossible for them to pay it, you know?
You know, so we do have a second by Commissioner Scott, and I want to add something. You know, I had people, when I was in Frankfurt before I left, in 2018, 2017, I asked them to send me their power bills. At that time, it was not uncommon to have a individual who is on fixed income with a power bill over $1,000. Part of that is if you have a bad winter, it's even worse. If you have a really hot summer, it's worse. We didn't have a bad winter, except for one spell last year, but if we have a bad winter this year, we have a lot of folks who live in homes, particularly mobile homes, that are poorly insulated. And every winter, we have families who, it never fails that we have a fatal fire in the winter here, because people, in a lot of cases, are using space heaters, salamanders, kerosene heaters, and it just happens. It has happened ever since I can remember. And Neid, I think, would agree with that. We have tragedies, year after year after year, because people are trying to stay warm. We have situations where families have been impacted by carbon monoxide poisoning because they're trying to stay warm. And no one, in my opinion, can sustain this. And I want to address something else before we act on this. One of the hardest decisions that I've had to make as judge executive was to entertain the garbage rate increase. And I'm going to tell you why. When we came in, before this court came in, there was no plans on what to do when our landfill filled up. Right now, we may have, may have, with the expansion that Governor Beshear gave us as a result of the flood, we may have, what Reggie, a year and a half, two years?
We got it passed about one year.
About 28 months. And we've done everything we can to recapture space that had been lost through a survey error. We're going to be really hard pressed as we sit here today, after we spent well over $1 million on the permitting process that's still ongoing. If the last court had waited six more months, another year, it would have been over with. You would have been shutting down Pike County's landfill. And I'm going to tell you why that's important. If we shut down that landfill, it's $3 million to close it, right up front. County didn't have it at the time. It's $3 million short right now in the escrow account to cover the post-closure costs for the next 30 years that the county's on the hook for. And it's going to be somewhere between $2 and $2.5 million to build a transfer station that has to be permitted and constructed. So if you shut down the landfill, you're still looking at about $8 to $9 million up front. I talked to Mark McKenzie, who's a friend of mine, he's a Johnson County judge executive. They're hauling their garbage to the landfill in Ashland. They're paying $48 a ton, $48 a ton. Right now, there's 50,000 tons a year going into our landfill. You can do the math. So you say 50,000 tons at $48, you're coming out to pretty close to $2.5 million just to pay to dump it. Plus, you got to haul it there, and it diesel fuel close to, you know, over $4. Now, it was over $5 at one time, you're probably looking at $1.5 million to haul 50,000 tons a year to Ashland. So if people are still upset about that rate increase at $24.50, if that landfill shuts down Pike County, whether it's during this term or after I'm gone, whenever that may be, the rates will skyrocket in order just to get the garbage to Ashland, which is the next closest landfill. I understand having to make hard decisions. Mountain Waters had to make hard decisions. But to me, you know, this is an easy decision. An 18.3% rate increase request is simply out of touch with the economic realities of what the people here face. You know, if you're getting a $400 power bill, if your power bill runs $400 a month, you're talking almost an $80 increase per month. Now, think about that. And like I said, a lot of these elderly folks, people on fixed income, their homes are older, there's no way they're going to be able to pay this. There's no way you're going to be able to pay this, and you're going to see some real tragic situations here. No one in Pike County or in eastern Kentucky should have to make a decision on whether to pay for their power bill or to buy food or medicine. But every day, that's a decision a lot of people have to make. If this rate increase passes, then it's going to get a lot worse for a lot of people. So we do have a motion, my motion, second by Commissioner Scott, to authorize Colonel Downey to draft the resolution. We'll approve it at the next meeting, and if it's okay with everyone, then we will send it to the Public Service Commission. So, madam, any question or discussion? Commissioner Adkins, you got anything you'd like to add?
I agree with you. People just can't take no more, you know? A power bill in the wintertime, and I've got a well-insulated home, $450, $500 a month a month, you know, I agree, people just can't do it. I'm all for the resolution.
Well, we need to have a meeting. You know, I hate to say this, the legislation that I introduced, you know, the power companies were able to kill it. Rocky Adkins and I were two of the few people that opposed shutting down the Big Sandy Power Plant. You know, when they shut down the Big Sandy Power Plant, and basically the ratepayers paid for a power plant that they already owned in West Virginia or the subsidiary own all or part of in West Virginia. Our power's coming from West Virginia by and large, and that's, to me, is not acceptable. We still produce coal here in eastern Kentucky, and we had a power plant, you know, aired half up the road, so... Roy, can you get that done for us next court meeting?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, next item is the second reading of proposed ordinance adopting Josh Coleman Road into the county road system. Colonel Downey, would you please present the second reading?
It's been determined in the best interest of the public for the Pike County Fiscal Court to formally accept public roads in the county system. Under KRS 178.0101, subsection 1, subsection paragraph, the, we can do this. The fiscal court now wants to take in .110 plus 56 feet of the Joshua Coleman Road in District Number 2. All the documentation required by our ordinance has been submitted, Judge. Thank you.
All right. All right, is there a motion to adopt Josh Coleman Road into the county road system?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Adkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Fabian, you're, everything's okay and in order with this?
Hey, Bubby, is this the road you were talking about?
Yes, yeah, me and Fabian went and looked at it, measured it that night, you know, it's one.
Yeah, there's eight or nine houses and property owners and...
Yeah.
You know, there's roads that were in the road system, probably that shouldn't, we know that it shouldn't have been. This is one that should have been. All right. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Adkins, second by Commissioner Blackburn. We've presented the second reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Adkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Greg, anything tonight from the bid front?
Our emergency managed department, management department has been in need of a truck for quite some time. They're actually able to write a grant and get a grant approved that will pay for half of the cost of the truck. I have located a truck. It's at Don Franklin Ford in London, Kentucky. Don Franklin is part of our all-state master agreement, our state contract. This truck that they have meets the specifications that were in the grant application. The total cost of this truck, it is a F-350 crew cab, four-wheel drive diesel. The cost is $76,345. Our grant will pay $38,172.50, and the Fiscal Court will be liable for $38,172.50. It'd be my recommendation, we purchase this truck from Don Franklin for $76,345.
Just a matter, just a question. Did we check with any of the local, like, Walters Ford or anybody to see if they had anything?
We did. We've looked everywhere. I actually just happened up on this truck. And it was actually at Don Franklin, who was on the all-state master agreement. So...
Did any of our local dealers have anything coming in that would end the pipeline?
It did not. And, and because it's, because it's on the state contract, we, you know, are obligated to bid.
There are a motion to purchase this...
Judge, can you get authorization for a check?
I'm ahead of you. I knew it was coming. I'm ahead of you. Is there a motion to purchase this F-350 Ford for emergency management for the sum of $76,345 from Don Franklin Ford on state contract price? An authorization to issue payment of a check for the same, noting that $38,172.50 will be reimbursed by a grant that's been obtained by the county?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Atkins, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
I just want to comment that, you know, this is the kind of thing that we've done since I've been judge. This saves the taxpayers $38,172.50. We have, we're probably somewhere well over 17 million in grants since I've been judge. Is that, you know what the number is now, Sharon? We updated that? So we're looking for every way to maximize the taxpayer benefit. And since I've been judge, there's not been a single property tax increase. There's been no occupational tax or insurance premium tax increase. So we've done a lot trying to reach out and get grant money and discretionary road money. Fabian Little's done a great job with that, working with both the Bevan administration and the Beshear administration. I just think it's a great thing. And I want to thank Sharon and whoever else worked on this grant, if it was Nae or whoever, Tim. That's $38,172.50 otherwise the taxpayers would have had to pay. So thank you all very much. Good job. And we do have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Can we just do it? I'm getting ahead of myself here. All right.
That's all I have. Thank you, Judge.
Short-term memory issue. Treasurers business, anything, Frankie?
Acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 salary schedule that was effective June 25th.
Is there a motion? Frankie, this is a lot of stuff here.
It's on the back, too.
Oh, great, Frankie. This is good. This is, this is, this is three hours worth of work. Can we do all these with one vote?
I don't know.
Can we do them all with the same vote, Roy? All right. Let's run. You want me to run through them then?
Sure.
All right. So on the Treasurers business, there's acknowledged receipt of the FY 2023 salary schedule effective June 25, 2023. Acknowledged receipt of the Sheriff and Clerks 2550 reports for June 2023. Authorized checks for lodging, registration expenses for any employee who needs to attend the 2023 solid waste planning and recycling workshop, September 13, 2023, at the Lake Cumberland State Resort Park in Jamestown, Kentucky. Authorized a check in the amount of $4,000 to Marty Little for paver repair work in front of the Pike County Courthouse. Authorized a check in the amount of $57,736 to reimburse the City of Pike for two forklifts, which is a solid waste recycling grant. Authorized a check in the amount of $6,915 to Mountain Firearms for three 6.5 by 14-foot utility trailers for the ATV trail system. Authorized a check in the amount of $29,172 to Jones Construction for contract work on Maynard Forkwater Project. This is to be reimbursed by Mountain Water District. We have renewal of standing orders. Authorized a standing order to pay training incentive payments through payroll for elected officials as documentation is received from Department of Local Government. Authorized a standing order with Pike County Clerk's Office and order to place or release liens, tag entitled vehicles, record deeds, or any other business necessary for the Fiscal Court. Authorized a standing order for postage to mail the annual and quarterly solid waste bills for residential commercial customers as needed, plus any other customer-related communication mailings. Authorized a standing order for checks to Anna Pence and Circuit Court Clerk for filing fees of small claims cases for delinquent occupational tax, net profit tax, and solid waste accounts. Frankie, I do have a question on that one. Why do we want to limit it to small claims cases? Because some of those could exceed the jurisdictional limits of small claims?
It's, it's the only thing that I've ever had a cause for to do in the past. I mean, it may, but I've only had...
We'll leave it as is. Authorization to pay Anna Pence and Pierce Pike Circuit Clerk for statutory responsibilities. Law librarian, $600 through payroll once per fiscal year. Authorized a standing order for checks to reimburse the Pike County Sheriff's Office for pass-through funds received for the U.S. Marshals Deputy Salaries, U.S. ATF Deputy Salaries, U.S. Corps of Engineers Fish Trap Lake Detail Deputy Salaries. Authorized a standing order for checks to Logan Animal Hospital for animal shelter spay and neuter services once approved by Billy Tussie. Authorized a standing order for ACH payments to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for non-federal cost share on the Pike Levisa flood-proofing project for feasibility study and design of the Cole Run Village flood wall. Authorized a standing order for checks to Consulting Services Incorporated and Southern Engineering for engineering services on the Pike Senior Citizens Project, which is a CDBG grant. And authorized a standing order for checks to Darryl Pugh, Pike County Clerk, for drawdown requests from the County Clerk's Record Storage Fund, which is a pass-through account. Does that accurately state all of the clerk, the Treasurers business?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurers business agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Is that a motion by Commissioner Atkins? A motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. I think I just saved Lisa a lot of work. Mr. Stacey, any other business here? All right. Thank you. All right. We do have need for executive session, I believe. Is that correct, William? Oh, I'm sorry. I just dropped. Sorry, Fabian. I just glossed right over you. We have the Pike County Road Supervisors Report. Come on up. That is not true.
We're, uh, mowing weeds every day. We started paving. Was able to, we didn't pave any last week. We paved yesterday Tom Atkins Road and the old Shelby Yard Road. That was about a mile and two tenths that we were able to put down yesterday. We paved two roads today. The plant did go down. There was a power outage at the plant, and evidently, it has knocked out their hard drive on their computer that runs the plant. So it's questionable whether we'll get to pave tomorrow or not.
How's their bridge coming at Penny Bottom?
It, it, the bridge is coming along well. We're down now to actually just doing the final grading on the road. You know, getting on to enter and exit the bridge. Then we'll have to pave there. Once we get the traffic moved over, then we will do the DMO on the old bridge. So, so it's coming along well, though.
Thank you, sir. You've been out on the paver, I know, all day, so...
I have been.
I heard it was pretty warm.
Yesterday was worse than today, but yeah. It gets warm out there.
Anyway, one of the things you had mentioned was getting with, trying to get a standing order to buy Gatorade, not just water, but Gatorade for the crews because it's really hot. And you had, have one employee that got a little bit too hot yesterday.
Yeah, we had one get a little sick on, a little sick on us yesterday from the heat. And I did go find some Gatorade today, but yeah, I'm going to have to ice them. I will try to buy some and some bulk to keep. That was, wanted to talk to Mr. Fannin there somehow, get us about...
You all have coolers on those trucks.
We do. Yeah. Yeah, we keep coolers. Full ice, full of cold water. I was thinking that may be what we do, is, is just to take the Walmart card and buy.
We don't, we don't need somebody getting heat exhaustion or heat stroke or something like that. So make sure there's not just water, but getting electrolytes and stuff, too. So if you, if you can get with Frankie or Greg on that and make sure we've got, for the, I don't know if that's been, Chuck, has that been an issue with the solid waste guys? All right. Let us know, okay?
But just on that paver, though, we do go through the water, myself included. I mean, if you don't, you have to stay hydrated. If you don't drink, because you're sitting right on top of 300 degrees, so it'll jerk the sap out of you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders for the road department?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Do we need executive session or not? We need executive session. Colonel Downey, could you please instruct the public and the court on the relevant provisions Kentucky open meeting law as it regards to entry into executive session for purposes of specific personnel matters?
Only. You know, Judge, I have a feeling that when I retire, that I'll dream about this particular number. I've said it so much. But according to KRS 61.810, the Fiscal Court is allowed to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed opinion and litigation, and under paragraph F to discuss specific personnel matters. Thank you.
Is there a motion entering to executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, Commissioner Atkins?
Me.
Commissioner Blackburn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We'll be in recess for executive session return at the call of the chair. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. It is my motion to acknowledge the hiring of Shannon Smallwood's contract labor for the trail system and hourly pay rate of $15 per hour effective 6/20/23, and to pay his, and his pay to run concurrent with payroll, and authorize a standing order for Treasurer to issue checks to acknowledge the resignation of Dusty Austin Stevens effective 6/20/6/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Connie Renee Chapman as a custodian at the Pike County Judicial Center to H. Rate of Pay effective 6/20/6/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Margaret Anne Malice as helper at the Animal Shelter to H. Rate of Pay effective 6/20/6/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Haley Hancock as a custodian at the Pike County Courthouse at 2H Rate of Pay effective 7/10/23, to accept the resignation of Jeffrey Allen Lucas as a equipment operator at Road Lot, I'm sorry, at the Road Department Special Crew effective 6/17/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Taylor Blake Hackney as CDL driver at the Marbon Road Lot at a 4H Rate of Pay effective 6/20/23, to approve and acknowledge the hiring of Toby O'Ryan Justice as a CDL driver at the Belfry Road Lot Number 6 at a 4H Rate of Pay effective 6/28/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Corey Rod Atkins as a mower operator at the Marbon Road Lot Number 4 at a 3H Rate of Pay effective 6/28/23, to acknowledge the resignation of Dalton France effective 7/14/23, and to acknowledge the moving of Gary Brandon from Seasonal at 2H Rate of Pay to mower operator for Robinson Creek Road Lot Number 2 at a 3H Rate of Pay effective 6/18/23, to acknowledge the hiring of Keaton Eastwood as a loader on the solid waste lot at 2H Rate of Pay effective 7/11/23, and to acknowledge the moving of Dylan Looney, a solid waste loader at a 2H Rate of Pay to a solid waste non-CDL driver at a 3H Rate of Pay effective 7/9/23. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Anything from the Department of Supervisors? Good. Anything from Deputy Judge?
No, sir.
Good. Anything from Roy, Colonel Downey? Anything? Good. Anything from Commissioners?
Yeah, I got a couple. Thank you.
Oh, boy. Go ahead.
I want to thank all the workers today. I've seen some sweat flying today. And, but the big concern I have, too, which that's a big concern, too, but the way it is, I like to prevent the courts for us to buy a hammer for one of the escalators, Judge. I think we need that. I don't think we need to rent one. I think, I think we ought to get one. Mr. Little, I'd say he'll agree with me. Because we can use it all over the county. You know, you can bust your bridges, chip a rock out of the creek. It'd be a, I think it'd save people money. Sure does.
You get with Fabian and Greg, get you a bid put out, figure out what you need, do what, you know, I'm, I'm all game for it.
I, I think it's a good thing. I think it'll save us money, you know, too.
I, I don't have, I think you're right. So Greg, can you get with Commissioner Scott, Mr. Little on that? Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Atkins, you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work. Watch this heat. Don't get too hot. Hope you're worth living your life over. Take it easy. Enjoy life while you can. Work, go home to your family, every... Y'all have a good week.
Thank you, sir. Just before I leave, I want to just address a couple things. I want to extend my condolences to Jeannie Robinson, her husband Berlin. Jeannie's father-in-law, Walter Robinson, passed away this week. They had the funeral today. That's why Jeannie's not here. And I played football growing up with Walter's son, Tommy, and it's a great family. And we just want to extend our condolences to Jeannie and the rest of the family. On a more positive note, I want to just give everybody some information on something. There will be an aviation camp. It's something that I wish had been available when I was a child. It's at the Pike County Airport. This is something that's taken place for many years. And it is eligible for kids who are 10 to 17. It's a two-day camp, and it is sponsored by the Aviation Museum of Kentucky. It's really cool what they do. So if your kid's looking for something to do before school goes back, or they love airplanes, or if it's something that you think they may be interested, it's perfectly safe. My kids have done it. My older two have done it. And it's a great experience for them. There's a lot of kids up there. They get to actually take their first flying lesson. They get to play with simulators. They learn about navigation. They learn about different, different things associated with aviation. It's a really cool thing. And right now, there is a huge demand for pilots. You know, it's, it's, it's a national crisis. And that's one of the reasons a lot of airlines have had to cancel flights. So it's a way that, you know, that kids may be able to, to, to find something that's interesting. interesting down the road, get a, make it a career. If you are interested, you can call the Pikeville Pike County Airport Board Chairman, Bill Hickman, four three two five seven seven seven. It's the law office number. Or you can call the airport at four three seven nine five four eight. They have forms up there. I'm going later on this evening to post a, the form on Facebook. So if anyone is interested, that has all the information on it, there is a cost of two hundred and nine dollars per student. However, there are scholarships available for children who may be interested in attending that can't afford the tuition. So again, it's the aviation camp on August first and second at the Pikeville Pike County Airport, Hatcherfield. If you're interested in it, again, I'll be posting it on Facebook, or you can call the airport or Airport Board Chairman, Bill Hickman, either one. Thought I would mention that. Anyway, I think that's all the business I have. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, is there any other business coming before the court tonight? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? I forgot, I forgot something. I forgot something. Yes, sir.
Adam, it works for solid waste. His wife passed away, and he'd keep them in our prayers. It's up the landfill.
I had not heard that.
Yes, yes. Very young girl, very good for her family. The Branums up Little Creek. Jeff Branum, her uncle, that's a music studio, sets up stage, the stuff.
Well, I appreciate the information and...
Yeah, she passed at forty-three, so keep her family in prayers.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting us know that. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, there's one last piece of business. I'd like to ask Naeed to come out and close us out in a word of prayer, and then we'll, we will entertain that motion.
Let us bow for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, Lord, we thank you so much for allowing us to come here this evening, dear Lord, and for this court to be able to do business for the betterment of the people of Pike County. Lord, we ask that you give traveling mercies to each and every one of us, dear Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with the Robinson family and their loss, Lord. Lord, we ask that you give them a comfort as only you can. Lord, I ask that you be with the Branum family, Lord, as they've lost a loved one as well. And Lord, I just ask that you just wrap your arms around them and, and help them through this time. Lord, I pray most of all, if there's one out there that doesn't know you as their personal Savior, maybe through something that's said or done, that, dear Lord, that they may come to know you before it's everlasting too late. Lord, I just ask these things in your precious and holy name, and amen.[1766.58]